Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. Let the record show all councilors are present. At this time, we'll do the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ads and deletes. We have ads, bids and quotes, number 4B, delete bids and quotes, number 1A. Could I get approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Fossil?
I'll support it.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Approval of minutes. Approved, number one, approve the minutes of the regular Hibbing City Council meeting of November 6th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number two, approve the minutes of Hibbing City Council workshop meeting of November 6th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Three, approve the minutes of the regular Hibbing City Council meeting of November 20th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Oh, no.
Hildebrand.
Hildebrand, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Four, approve the minutes of the workshop meeting, November 20th, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda. Approve the accounts payable dated November 27th, 2024. Checks, number 178810 to 178899, in the amount of $340,000, $380.45. Two, approve the city payroll dated November 22nd, 2024, in the amount of $636,000, $102.38. Three, accept and place on file the Hibbing Police Department Activity Report for October 2024. Four, approve the request for qualifications for raceway operator, manager, promoter of the Hibbing Raceway. Five, authorize the hire of Emma Levine for full-time city service maintenance pending pre-employment contingencies. Six, offer resolution number 24-12-01, enabling the city of Hibbing to join the Highway 169 Coalition. Seven, authorize the mayor to sign the Hibbing Public Safety Building Letter of Intent to move forward with land acquisition. Eight, acknowledge the termination of Matthew Hadfield effective November 27th, 2024. Nine, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Curling Club to hold their raffle on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, at the Hibbing Curling Club. Ten, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Curling Club to hold their raffle on Saturday, April 12th, 2025, at the Hibbing Curling Club. Eleven, approve the special event permit application of Victory Christian Academy to hold their Victory 5K on Saturday, April 26th, 2025. Set the next regular Hibbing City Council meeting for Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the City Hall Council Chambers. Thirteen, set the next regular Hibbing City Council workshop meeting for Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, following the regular Hibbing City Council meeting. Fourteen, approve the 2025 cigarette licenses. Fifteen, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the North St. Louis County Soil and Water Conservation District Board Supervisors and Staff Open House for elected officials on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM, at 505 Third Street North Suite at Virginia, Minnesota. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
Do we have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman? Support?
Support.
Supports by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. At this time, we'll move on to the open forum, and we do have one individual here tonight, Anthony. The mic is yours, and you'll have five minutes. And again, as previous, please state your name and address.
Anthony Polari, 2519 Sixth Avenue, East of Hibbing, Minnesota.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and all the viewers at home. Thank you, Caleb. I'd hope to give everyone an update on how the shelter's been going. But since the last city council meeting, I've been served a no trespassing notice, valid for one year. But that's beside the point right now. So instead, with this time, I've decided to challenge everybody here on the city council meeting, Andy, Sheena, Jesse, Jay, Chris, Jennifer, Pete, John, Justin, James, Candy, Steve, and Greg, and all the viewers at home, to go visit our shelter, not as city council meeting members, but as city residents. Thank you. And to go in there and just go visit the dogs or cats, and just go there and observe yourself. And with that, you'll develop your own opinion on how our shelter is being run, or the feeling of it. I lost my notes here. I don't want to stand here and tell you that it's improving or just, you know, not getting better, but if you go there, I know you're all busy with city council and everything else in your lives, but if you could do that, I think you'd have your own personal idea of that. This building is owned by the city, but it represents the city. Now, before the restructuring and everything, I would say our shelter had a, I would put it against anybody. It was something to be proud of. It was something I was proud of, something I lived to go to. I used to dress up like Santa and go take pictures with the animals, taking pictures with the staff. Anytime I can use my Santa suit, I like to use it. I use it to ring the bell for the Salvation Army. This year, during the holidays, I'm not able to go see the animals this time. So I just want to challenge everybody, everybody at home, to just go there with an open mind, ask a few questions, and see for yourself how it's going. That's about all I have right now. But it won't be available after the meeting. I got another previous volunteer engagement I need to go to, so I appreciate all the time. And I look forward to talking to you again.
Thank you, Anthony. I appreciate your comments. At this time, we'll move on to building official. Mr. Green? Committee reports.
Mayor and council members, this was a request for a home business from Damian Brown, 5243 First Avenue, for an outdoor storage business. This would be for campers, RVs, and boats. The applicant has 19 acres, and a home business is intramuse in that zone where he lives. The planning commission heard his request. There was no objection from the audience at the public hearing on this. There was a few conditions. Both of his parcels would be joined into one, so his home and the 19 acres. It has to be, that has to be joined to have a home business. You have to live on the property, which he does. The outdoor storage would start in the northwest portion of the property, which would be the more shaded wooded area, the very far back of his property. And then a row of trees would also be planted along the road for screening, leaving room for a future driveway. Right now, they would use the driveway that he has and get back there. It's all pretty much flat with some wooded areas. So looking for approval from the planning commission with those conditions on the resolution also.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Green had to say regarding an outdoor storage business. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? The full support of your board and
Correct.
Very good. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Move on to Library Director, Sreeni.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. For A, I have to offer resolution 24-12-02 for a non-monetary donation of artwork valued at $2,000 to the Hibbing Public Library. We were given four paintings from Patsy Reed High by Catherine Sadness. So those are, they're nice. And then for B, offer resolution number 24-12-03 to accept the grant from the Owens Preservento, Dr. Benjamin P. Owens Family Foundation, in the amount of $3,000 for the 2024 Yuletide Festival. That's next week.
Very good. We'll move on with A first, resolution to accept a non-monetary donation of artwork. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to B, offer resolution number 241203 to accept the grant from Owens Preservento, Dr. Benjamin P. Owens Family Foundation. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
I will abstain.
I'm sorry?
I will abstain.
Will abstain, okay. No other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
We move on to Mr. Prasinski for Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. One item from my office this evening, and it's more of a heads-up for our residents. So as the 2024 year comes to an end, we will be delivering our annual report. That'll be at our next meeting, which is on December 18th. So that's all I have this evening.
That's it? Thank you. We move on to bids and quotes, and first, Mr. Story's not here. Will you be handling?
I will, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. We have two things under Mr. Story. Mr. Prasinski?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, so item 1A, we're actually going to strike that. We didn't, we didn't get all the information that we needed for the city council to make a decision. However, item 1B, we'll move on to that. This evening, we are asking the city council to go ahead and authorize a proposal from Northeast Technical Services for the Public Safety Building in the amount of $32,400, and that's for geotechnical services, including inspections during the build cycle. So if you have questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
All right. Hearing what Mr. Prasinski had to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? So this is, what you just said is this is for, once we start construction, they'll be handling that portion of it.
Yeah, there's actually two pieces to it. There'll be some during the planning and demo phase, but then also during the construction phase. We thought it'd be best to have that same consultant doing both of those phases, so.
Very good. Well, you have consistency that way, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you. We move on to Chief Police, Mr. Esti.
Here in council, good evening. At our last working session, we talked in length about our body cams. Went back to both the vendors we had gotten quotes from, and in the end, Axon came back significantly cheaper, and as we had discussed, a much better product. Motorola came in at nearly a half a million dollars. That was their final quote. Axon came in at $231,756.96, and that's over a five-year agreement. So looking for council approval to move forward with Axon.
Okay, hearing what Police Chief, Mr. Esti, had to say regarding body camera purchases. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thanks.
Move on to Fire Chief, Mr. Jenkler.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The first item before you is the ask to authorize the purchase of a brush truck slide-in unit pump tank. We did already order the chassis, and this is the pump and slide-in unit that would go inside of that chassis. We did receive two quotes for this. The lowest quote, including shipping, was from Fire Safety USA for $23,300, and that is 24 budgeted funds.
Very good. Hearing what Chief Jenkler had to say regarding brush truck pump unit. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
The next one for you is actually the body for this truck. This is a service body. After consulting with Fleet Manager McKenney, this is a state bid through Christ Steel for a stall utility body. It's very similar to what the mechanics have on their trucks, without the cranes and stuff like that. And this slide-in unit will actually go in between that. It's a much better worth for us because we can use the truck year-round. We can put tools in it. It's not just a simple pickup of the slide-in unit. So I'd like you to authorize the purchase on state bid from Christ Steel for a utility body for $26,933. And this is coming from the one-time funds that the legislature gave a couple of years ago. It's a part of the total package for the truck. We are billing it piece by piece because we saved about 100 grand.
Very good. Hearing what Chief had to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Support.
I'll support it.
By Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Chief, will this be functional for this spring?
Yes, we expect the chassis to come in in mid-January. Christ Steel has this body in stock. I will call them tomorrow. They will hold it for us. When the truck comes in, it'll get down there, we'll bring it down there, down to the cities, and it'll take about three weeks. And the pump will, it'll be here long before fire season.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Again, we move on to Library Director, Ms. Rainey.
Mr. Mayor and Council, first one I have is approval to purchase a Cover One Book Repair Binding Machine in the amount of $1,290. Currently, we have a handful of books in need of repair that can take a long time to do. Looking into this machine, it can take up to five to 10 minutes to repair one book, and the staff, everyone's very excited to get it and get it going and get stuff back on the shelves.
Very good. So we're looking for the purchase of a Cover One Book Binding Machine. Wishes of the council. Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Jill, what's the name of the company that it was purchased from? Was that Cover One?
It is Cover One.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B, Joe.
Approval for the Grant Writing Services for the 2025 MDE Multi-Purpose Community Facilities Grant Application Writing Assistance of Miriam Carroll in the amount of $3,250.
Okay, so we're looking for writing, grant writing services. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, how much will the grant be, you'll be submitting?
$500,000.
$500,000, okay. Great. Good luck. Thank you.
Yes. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We move on to Fleet Manager, Mr. McKenney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At our last working session, Mr. Story brought up our excavator, replacing our excavator with a lighter machine to get DOT compliant when it comes to weight and transport. So internally, did a lot of research on size of machines, trailers, different options, and we came to the conclusion to downsize our machine. Being able to haul it with current trailer setup, better operational for our operators and skillset, I think, and just a better fit for doing city work, so. We will surplus our current excavator in the spring. We're going to wait until spring, and estimated value in about $100,000 range. We hope to get out of that, hopefully more. So we're looking to approve the attached quote to road machinery for a Kamatsu excavator in the amount of $232,172.32.
All right. Hearing what Mr. McKenney had to say regarding downsizing to an excavator that fits our trailer to meet DOT standards. Wishes of the council. I'll make the motion approve. We have a motion by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. The funding?
Yeah, the funding will come out of Waste Collection Sewer Fund, and then the surplus will go back into that fund once we sell them.
Very good. What is the timeframe, Joe, on
Lead times, two to three months, so pretty, pretty quick.
So it'll be before spring when
Yeah.
you can get back into ditching.
They actually do have machines on the ground. It's just the time is, we gotta add a thumb onto it and a ditching bucket and some hydraulic functions, so.
So all the apparatuses and utility pieces can fit on this new excavator than we used with our old one?
We're replacing with new stuff.
Okay.
The couplers, stuff like that are different, so we'll sell all that with our old one and then new with this one, so.
But you'll have the same ability that we had with the old one?
Yes, it's a little, little on the reach and depth dig. I mean, there is a little bit difference. It is a machine with, it's called a zero radius, so there's no tail to them, which fits actually working in rightaways and closer quarters with house demos and stuff, so.
Very good. Thank you for the information. Yes?
Joe, do we have an estimate what you might be looking at getting for our old equipment that you're going to try to sell?
Yeah, we did get a trade value of $85,000, and then just market value, I'm hoping to get about 100. You know, sometimes some of that stuff goes for even more, so, but we will try to get in the 100 range.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks.
At this time, we'll move on to Truth and Taxation Public Hearing. The purpose of Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, yes?
We can't start that until 6 o'clock, so we'll have to
Adjourn.
No, not adjourn, but just
Resess.
Resess. Because we can't do it until 6:00 PM.
Correct. You can't do the Truth and Taxation until 6:00, so you're either recessed or take up your working session items if you'd like.
Sure.
What's wishes of the council? Go to working session.
Sir?
All right, let's do that. Do we need to recess first, ask for recess, or?
Yes, make a motion to recess and then
Very good. I'm looking for a motion for recess. So moved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. The purpose of the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing is to discuss the city's 2024 proposed levy and 2025 city budget. At this time, we'll turn it over to Finance Director, Ms. Sheena Moll.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council and Mayor. Are you able to put it on the screen now? Okay, there it comes. This will kick off our Truth and Taxation section of this meeting. Today is toll 4, 2024. The purpose of the Truth and Taxation, it was enacted in 1988 to enhance participation in Minnesota's property tax system, to educate the public on how property taxes are determined, to encourage the public to understand the local government's budget process, and to encourage the public to become involved in helping local officials set spending priorities. So we'll start by talking about the property tax cycle. In January, the county assessor assesses both real and personal property, and the property values are based off the prior year's sales data. By March 31st, that is the last day for the county auditor to send property tax statements to property owners. This would be the last year's levy, and it would be the current year's operating and capital budgets. March-April timeline, that's when valuation notices get sent to property owners. This would be using the January assessment data. These values will be used in computing proposed tax statements that will be sent in November, and then also the final tax statements that are sent out the following March. In the April and May timeline, that's when the local Board of Appeal and Equalization will convene. This would be the time to appeal your valuation. You should not wait until November when you see your proposed tax statement. May 15th, that's when the first half of your real property taxes would be due from the statement that you received in March. By August 15th, your property tax refund returns or Form M1PR would be due. This is when you can claim your refund up to one year past the date. And there's a link here to the Department of Revenue website where you could file for a property tax refund if you qualify. By September 30th, that's when the preliminary budget and levy must be adopted by that date. The levy is the preliminary budget, and that will be reflected in the proposed tax statements. On the next slide for the property tax cycle, you'll see that October 15th is when the second half of real property taxes are due. That's still that same tax statement that was sent in March. It should have two stubs at the bottom, so the first one would be due in May and the second one in October. The November 10th through the 25th, that's when Truth and Taxation notices are sent to property owners. The proposed tax statement is based off the preliminary budgets and the valuations that were sent in March. Everybody who has real property should have gotten a tax statement by now this year. November 25th, that's when Truth and Taxation meetings can start occurring. And then in December, the city will adopt its final budget and levy for taxes paid in the following year. The final levy cannot exceed the preliminary levy. December 31st is the last day for real property owners to file a homestead application with the assessor. So how are your property tax statements determined? So this is the top section of your proposed tax statement. This is step one. This is where it's got your estimated market value at the top. That's where buyers and sellers create the value based off sales in the market, and the assessor studies the market, and that creates the value. Then on the next row, you'll see the homestead exclusion. Everybody that owns a home and is, when homesets it, is a primary residence, can claim a homestead exclusion. This year, that changed. It's now the 40, it's 40% of the first $95,000, minus 9% of the value over $95,000. There's no exclusion if your value is over $517,200. And then any other exclusions you may have, and then your taxable market value would be the bottom line there. So you can see in this example, for 2025, it's $124,035. So the classes and rates are determined by the state. There's homestead, non-homestead, commercial, industrial, et cetera. And then the tax, the taxable market value times your rate creates your tax capacity for the property. The first $500,000 taxable market value of homestead properties has a rate of 1%. Anything over that would be a 1.25%. Step two on calculating how your proposed tax statements are determined, that is where you find the tax capacity extension rate. So you would take the county levies, school levies, city levies, all the levies that would be on your tax statement, divided by the tax capacities of all the property, and that would create the tax extension rate. When you multiply that times your tax capacity, that is where you would figure out your tax amount. In this example, you can see that's $2,096.19. Then any credits that you would have on your tax statement would be reduced from that tax amount. In this example, would be the taconite homestead credit, 66% of the homestead tax up to a maximum of $515. That was also just increased in 2024 from 3024. That was also just increased in twenty twenty-four from three hundred and fifteen dollars and ten cents. On this next slide, you can just see an example of, on your proposed tax statement, it'll show you all the different meeting information for different jurisdictions, um, and then they'll have when they're gonna have their hearings for that. All of the proposed tax statements, they exclude special assessments. So the final budget and levy adoption, final budgets and levies must be adopted before the end of December for certification to the county auditor. The final levy cannot exceed the preliminary. This, the city of Hibbing approved a preliminary levy increase of nine point three five percent over last year. The proposed final city levy is for a three point four seven percent increase over last year. The final twenty twenty-four levy will be reflected in the twenty twenty-five tax statements that'll be printed in March, and then there's an example of what that looks like on this slide. This one's from twenty eighteen, it's an old picture, but this is what it looks like. Every single year, the property tax statement usually has a different color, but it's a similar format. The final tax statement will be sent in March with payment stubs to remit the payment. Many properties have their payments escrowed with their mortgage. The final adopted levy for all jurisdictions will be recalculated in the final tax statement in March of twenty twenty-five. So here's some different, I have some different bar graphs and charts that show some different examples of taxes from the Minnesota Department of Revenue. So here's the local net tax capacity of Hibbing. So on this bar graph, you'll see different types of properties. That first column has agricultural, there's residential homestead, non-homestead, apartment, commercial, industrial, other, personal property, and then the total. So I'd just like to point out on this slide how much of the taxes are residential homestead taxes, and how they're also increasing. Um, that orange bar is from twenty twenty-two, gray twenty twenty-three, and then the yellow is twenty twenty-four. Um, the next slide is for taxable market value in Hibbing. This is a pie chart that just shows how the taxable market values have been increasing overall. So twenty twenty-two, we are at seven hundred and thirty-nine million, twenty-three, eight hundred and forty-two million, and now we're over a billion dollars. Um, and you'll see in the gray that that portion of the pie is also increasing at a faster pace. That would be the residential portion of the pie. And then the light blue is the commercial industrial, which has gone down from just under fifteen percent in twenty twenty-two to eleven point two two in twenty twenty-four. This slide will show you how we compare with other cities that are neighboring communities to us. Um, the city of Buell is lower, that's the first set of the bar graphs. Um, they're lower than the city of Hibbing, city of Chisholm's pretty comparable. And then you'll see on the East Range, city of Ivalis, Gilbert, and Virginia, they have higher tax rates than Hibbing does. On this slide, you can see the average local net tax capacity by entity, so every tax statement will have your county taxes, city, school district, and then special taxing districts. Special taxing district, so seventy-seven and a half percent of your tax bill would be city taxes. Fifty-two percent would be county, eleven, school district, and then a little over one percent for special taxing districts. Um, the county has a larger area to cover taxes over. School district has, you know, a regional side of the city of Hibbing as well. So Hibbing just is, is collecting our whole budget and just Hibbing. The final proposed twenty twenty-five city budget, so where does your tax dollar go? The city of Hibbing is proposing an increase to the city levies of three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, which would be an increase of three point four seven percent over last year, and it includes the following levies. The total bottom line to all of the levies for twenty twenty-four paid twenty twenty-five would be ten million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars. The general fund is the major operating fund of the city. Sixty-one cents of every tax dollar for the city would go to general operations. The most significant changes to revenues, which are increasing by a little over sixty-four thousand, would be LGA is actually increasing slightly this year, it increased much higher in twenty twenty-four. Um, that's only increasing by twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, but I did wanna point that out just because it's such a large part of our budget. The increase in interest income is two hundred and fifty thousand. Our fixed income securities that had very low yields are now maturing, and now we're replacing them with higher, higher rate securities. We don't have the Hibbing rate transit anymore, so we have the elimination of the transit grant income. Rental licensing revenue, um, we removed that estimate because we're still in the transition period of starting that program. We had budgeted some for twenty twenty-four, and now we realize that we just are still transitioning to that. The ambulance revenue, that increased by a hundred thousand dollars. We've had more ambulance transfers, which yield more income. And then the Taconite School Aid is not expected for twenty twenty-five, so we decreased that by sixty-five thousand. State Peace Officer Benefit Fund, we had a one-time funding in the twenty-three legislative session. So since they funded that program, now we've been getting instead of fifteen thousand a year, about a hundred and eighty-five thousand a year. And that's expected to last for a few years after that funding was, was done. One significant changes to expenditures, which are increasing by a little over a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. We have the two and a half percent pay increase per our collective bargaining agreements. And then we also have our staff increases from our base pay structure. We created the new code enforcement department for the rental compliance. Medical insurance is increasing ten percent for next year for active employees and our early retirees. Uh, we took our city services personnel budget, and we're actually splitting it out to better reflect what departments are actually working in. Um, so that's a reallocation to City Hall, the Recreation Department, Parks Memorial Building, and the Library. The elections budget you'll see is reduced by ninety-six percent, and that's because twenty twenty-five is an odd year, so there aren't elections in that year. And then the transit budget is eliminated due to Arrowhead Transit that took over on August first. So eight cents of every dollar of your city tax is for general government operations. Um, so the general government operations are listed on this screen, I won't go through every single one of them, but the bigger ones, you'll see that one oh eight seven decrease. That was that election that I, I talked about, that the twenty twenty-five is an election year. And then the City Hall increasing by eighty-one is partly due to that reallocation of staff time to the City Hall. And then the general fund, public safety, fifteen, fifteen cents of every dollar of your city taxes for police department operations, um, that is decreasing overall by six thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars. Um, that's pretty much because we moved the code enforcement out of the police and into a new department under the Fire Department for twenty twenty-five. Um, another slide on public safety, this would be for fire and EMS. Ten cents of every dollar of your city taxes for fire and ambulance department operations. One hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six forty, you can see twenty twenty-four for code enforcement was zero dollars. Twenty twenty-five is just under two hundred thousand dollars. So that's where we created that department there. Then the Public Works Department, fifteen cents of every dollar of your city taxes for public works operations. Streets and alleys increased by two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four dollars. Um, we've had an increase to our mortar grader leases, that was a substantial reason for that price increase. We've also seen an increase in operating supply costs. Culture and Recreation, seven cents of every dollar is for culture and recreation. This is another one of those slides where you'll see the city services being split out amongst other departments. So the city services budget went from one point seven million down to zero with that reallocation. The bottom line of the recreation is it decreased by one hundred and fifty thousand, three sixty-five. Um, but some of that was, was allocated to the City Hall and Library on a different slide. The other functions of government, we have six cents of every dollar is for other functions. That includes the ones listed here, you'll see the bus transit was eliminated from the five hundred and sixty-nine, went down to zero due to Arrowhead taking over transit operations. Um, and then the insurance actually decreased. Um, that's because retirees, when they turn sixty-five and go onto Medicare, it's much more, it's much more cost-effective than being on the early retiree plan. The Library Fund, eight cents of every dollar of your city taxes for library operations. Um, you'll see an increase of ninety-three thousand, twenty-three dollars for the library. We do have a minimum maintenance levy that's set by the state of five hundred and eighty-six thousand, forty-three dollars. That's been unchanged for many years. And then the general fund levy is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fund the deficit. Um, some of those salaries were also allocated to the library for twenty twenty-five. The HITA Fund, one cent of every dollar is allocated to HITA for economic development. The budget increased for twenty twenty-five of five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. The levy has been consistently set at one oh five, one seventy-seven, and it remains unchanged for twenty twenty-five. The statutory maximum is point zero one eight, one three percent of the city's taxable market value. The fund still has enough reserves from prior years to cover the anticipated expenditures in excess of the levy amount. Capital Equipment and Improvement Fund, ten cents of every dollar of your tax dollar is for capital outlay for twenty twenty-five. We, this is for things that are five thousand or more dollars and lasts for more than a year. So here's some items that we have budgeted for twenty twenty-five for capital. Street sweeper, wheel loader, we're doing remodels of the clubhouse, two police cars, Lincoln Playground donation, finance software, Kerry Lake Road Rehab, ADA bathrooms for our library, a columbarium, and then a police drone. Last year's capital levy was seven ninety-five, three ninety-eight. This year's proposed levy is one million, thirty-five, two thirty-six. So this levy would be, would be levied to fulfill the city's capital needs for twenty twenty-five. The Permanent Improvements Fund, this is for street and infrastructure. Twelve cents of every dollar of your city taxes for permanent improvements for twenty twenty-five. This would be for things like sidewalk improvements that we share with the residents. Alleys, we did encumbrance some funds from twenty twenty-four that we would be rolling into twenty twenty-five. City paving, um, this would be for segments that aren't eligible for MSA, or Minnesota State Aid. Um, we're looking to collaborate with the Hibbing Public Utilities on a water main project in Greenhaven. Then there's a non-participating piece of the Zimrod Bridge Project. The remainder of that would be paid with state bridge bond funds. And then the BNSF railroad crossing approaches, this would be year one of three of that plan. Last year's permanent improvement levy was one million, one twelve, two thirty-six. This year's proposed levy is one million, two sixteen, two forty-three, and this would be levied to fulfill the city's twenty twenty-five permanent improvement needs. The Tax Abatement Fund, one cent of every dollar is for tax abatement. And this is levied to incentivize economic development. The city can enter into a development agreement that involves tax abatement incentives. The city has four active agreements at this time, and this levy remains unchanged from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Debt Service, five cents of every dollar is for debt service. Twenty twenty-five levy for debt service would be for principal and interest payments. And the city levies by statute, one hundred and five percent of next year's debt service needs to cover principal and interest payments on existing debt. The city issued bonds in March of twenty twenty-four to purchase capital equipment. The overall debt service levy was reduced from five hundred and ninety-six thousand and twenty-four to a proposed twenty twenty-five levy of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, forty dollars. OPEB, that's Other Post Employment Benefits. Three cents of every dollar is for OPEB. The city has accrued liability of thirty million dollars for post employment benefits of employees. This amount will be paid over many years. The two hundred and ninety thousand levy for these benefits goes into a fund to pay for benefits of retirees, similar to how a pension fund works. Um, this year I added another slide, or a couple slides, for other entities that the city approves their levies. This one's for the HRA levy. An HRA is designated by state law as a special taxing district. The HRA may levy a tax upon all taxable property within the city with consent via resolution by the city council. The maximum levy of the HRA is point zero one eight five percent of the previous year's estimated market value of the city. HRA's levy request has been unchanged at fifty thousand for many years. The housing needs assessment shows that Hibbing has many unmet housing needs. The HRA initially requested an increase for twenty twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand to assist with housing projects and grant matching. We're proposing this year's increase to be from fifty thousand to one hundred thousand for the final paid twenty-five levy. And then we have the Range Regional Airport Levy. The Chisholm-Hibbing Airport Authority was created by state law in nineteen ninety-four. The airport may levy tax on all taxable property according to the total tax capacity in each city, which would be in the city of Chisholm and in the city of Hibbing, to provide funds for the operation of the authority. A joint meeting of the city councils must be convened annually for the purpose of either adopting or rejecting said levy. The airport is requesting a paid twenty twenty-five levy of eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, which would be an increase of twenty-three thousand, six thirty-two, or two point nine six percent from the seven hundred and ninety-seven, three sixty-eight requested for taxes paid in twenty twenty-four. Um, these are business type activity slides, so these don't actually affect taxes, but they are part of the city's budgets. So the sewer fund is paid with utility fees rather than the levy. Um, you'll see for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, the increase is for just under one point four million dollars. We do have a rate study in progress with Baker-Tilly. Um, we budgeted a one percent increase to rates, which was from our previous rate study. The biggest increase is because sanitary and storm, we have that large sewer lining project in our CIP. Sanitation Fund is also paid with utility fees rather than the levy. Um, there's a proposed increase for twenty-five of one eighty-six, eight fifty. We aren't projecting any rate increases for twenty-five. We have, our department has, are currently looking into operations to improve efficiency and to also promote cost savings. And in twenty twenty-five, we have budgeted an F-five-fifty container handler and a twenty twenty-five rapid rail garbage truck. And we are still working on catching up on replacing some very old sanitation equipment. So here's an example of just an impact to a taxpayer. So this would be for the average residential market value of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Hibbing's fiscal disparities allocation in twenty-five decreased by two hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which will increase our proposed tax rate from seventy-two point eight one five percent to seventy-eight point six four percent, which is an increase of five point eight percent. However, with the homestead exclusion increasing, the taxpayer will see a decrease in their twenty twenty-five taxes if the assessed value stays the same. So you can see that off to the right there, you've got the twenty twenty-four column and the twenty-five column. The estimated market value didn't change, but because the homestead exclusion went up, the taxable market value went down, and then therefore, the bottom line taxes also will be decreased. Um, here's a slide with some property tax relief programs that are all available on the state or Minnesota Department of Revenue website. So, um, I encourage everybody to check them out to see if anyone is eligible for any of these programs. And then the questions and comments tab, um, if it's anything about the city's budget, there's my contact information there at the top. Sheena Muller, Finance Director, Treasurer. And then if there's any questions about the assessed value or the classification of a property, then Rodella LaFreniere is an appraiser for the St. Louis County Assessor's Office, and her contact information is here as well. And then that's all I got, so then I'll kick it over to the Mayor for the public hearing part.
Well, I thank you so much for that presentation, Sheena. Very informative. At this time then, uh, I will ask if anybody is interested in speaking to the proposed levy for the information provided today. For a second time, I'll ask if anybody is interested in speaking to our proposed levy for twenty twenty-five. And a third time, I'll ask if anybody's interested in speaking to our levy proposed for twenty twenty-five. If no one's stepping forward at this time, I will move it back to Ms. Muller. And, uh, looking for the city final levy and resolutions.
Thanks, Mayor, so, um, for item A, I'm offering resolution number twenty-four dash twelve dash oh four. This would be adopting the final twenty twenty-five city budget and twenty twenty-four levy for the city of Hibbing.
Hearing what Ms. Muller had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counsel Swiber.
I'll support.
Supported by Counsel Faso. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
For item B, I'm offering resolution number twenty-four dash twelve dash oh five, approving the certification of the final twenty twenty-four Housing and Redevelopment Authority levy in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for taxes payable in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we're talking about the HRA levy, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counsel Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Counsel Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries, C, Ms. Muller.
Item C, I'm offering resolution number twenty-four dash twelve dash oh six, approving the twenty twenty-four Range Regional Airport Authority final levy request.
Okay, we're looking for support for the Regional Airport Authority final levy request. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counsel Faso.
Support.
Support by Counsel Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Muller. At this time, I'll look for adjournment for the meeting.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor.
Can you say one thing real quick?
Yes.
Just, just wanna let the staff know, I'm super, super impressed with the process. And thank you very much, it was really clean, getting this yesterday was really fun, too.
too, I did take time to look at it while I was trying to get some sleep last night, but this was a really good process, and it's been smooth, and it, and we had a really good result, so thank you guys for all the work.
Yep, absolutely.
Very appreciated.
Very good, after those kind words, uh, we have a motion by Counselor Bayless?
Yes.
Support?
Sure.
By Counselor Swiber. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion adjourned. Thank you.